Is clauseable peculiary interest, now having respect to the items on agenda?
Yes.
Peculiary interest.
Yes, it's a personal and prejudicial interest. All items relating to the clerk because I've been reported to Leicestershire Police by the clerk and have to attend Market Harbour Police Station at nine forty-five tomorrow morning. What it means, I'm reported this by my feelings of being reported to the police.
Right, let's, let's have one person please.
And there are items about the clerk.
Right, okay, thank you. It was just, okay. Any other interest now having respect to agenda items, I have agenda item fourteen, I'm declaring another interest for as much that I am a membership of Open Town Partnership. Any other interests to be declared? Respect agenda, no? No. Okay, just clarification for the, clarification for the clerk please. Are you saying that is a pecu- peculiary interest, that's a financial interest?
No, it's a personal and prejudicial interest.
So that's a second one, that's any other interest now.
Sorry?
So that was any other interest.
Two, it should be two, two.
Well, thank you, Anna. So just so for the record, then you are declaring another interest, not a peculiary interest. The peculiary is by the.
Sorry, I meant prejudicial, personal and prejudicial, you've put it above P and P.
Well, that's a, that's a judicial interest.
Two, two, under two, two.
Is it? Yeah. Sorry, well, yes, as long as the clerk's happy with, with that. Um, but I still will take part.
All right, okay, just a minute please, clerk's want to get. Right, your grounds, your reasons are?
Um, because I've been reported to Leicestershire Police and have to voluntarily attend at Leic- at Market Harbour Police Station tomorrow.
All right, sure.
Well, it is because it.
All right, if you, agenda item three.
I have another interest as well because we've got to be open and transparent. And it's also the same item as you, car boot sale, I'm actually in the process of preparing a paper for, um, Open Town Council to run them themselves. So it, it's, uh, it's just something I want to declare that I've got an interest in that.
Sorry, I think you've lost me, an interest in, an interest in what?
I, I just said, sorry, chairman, am I speaking a foreign language? I.
No, no, I'm not sure what you're interested in.
The same item that you gave, which is the car boot sales, and I'm preparing a paper which hopefully will come to council to, that we run these car boots ourselves.
Right, thank you. Okay.
So it's fair that I did.
Right, thank you, agenda item three, minutes for the last meeting. Do we have any comments on the meeting before, before, before vote? Think that was enough?
I'll move the, I'll move the minutes, chair.
So you're, you're proposing, yes, very much, can I have a second for that?
Chair.
Thank you. If they don't have a second, all those in favour?
Council's line, just get the, I'm sure you stay, yeah.
We will, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, you've got that.
Eight or?
Okay. Abstentions. One, two.
Three.
Three. Thank you very much.
This is, this is each page.
What's that?
Ten. Seven, four. Thank you very much.
Okay, agenda item four, chairman and members of courts, agenda being one. Just going to start with the first one of those. The chairman's report, that's just for information. And we've had two tables to say which. And so there's.
I don't know what this is here, there's all bits and pieces.
Sorry, these were members to.
Just two tables, probably.
Yeah, yeah.
Got the money back.
Right, thank you, thank you.
Yeah, I've got them.
You've got them?
Oh, this is like a petition from residents.
Oh, yes, that's the one. I've done some hard copies for everybody and also, well, just.
Thanks very much. That's for thank you, man.
Yeah, so hard copy for the.
I've got the last bit, it's, I did it earlier, one, the last one. No, it's one, one.
You're good, you're good.
Thank you.
I know one, I tell.
Thank you very much.
I can buy one here.
Well, um.
Go on, chair.
It's a table, you're, you're, give us just three days, that'd be table.
I don't have time, I don't think. I'm sure we've got these things to do. I hope so.
Oh, I've written that.
I've just, I've just.
All right, so it's no one can see here.
I can't hear.
You, it's not on here.
I can't, I can't hear.
No one can see you, yeah.
Yeah, well, it's rubbish.
Okay, go back to order then, please.
I've read this one yet. I've read those too.
Chairman, can I raise a point of order, I wasn't going to, but, um, I have raised this before, the law is very clear on agenda items and things, but.
We've, we've shown all of you those.
No, I'm referring to the law which says about preparing agendas and providing reports for us to consider, we are entitled to three days clear to sight of any document that relates to a gender item, or we are not supposed to consider the agenda items. And I keep saying it and I keep ignored, and every meeting in the last, what, nine months, we are past document after document in the meeting and said, please read it. It's in the good councillor guide, so that's in it, I can see the past video of it, and it very clearly states there that we must be given three clear days to consider, or we don't consider the items that these relate to.
Thank you, councillor Brooks, your comment is lovely.
And this is all we're going to do, that's all we do every meeting, chairman.
They are actually, you wish, I wish the clerk wishes to come in for some clarification.
Yeah, maybe just for some information only.
But we have a document here that relates to an agenda item which is signed by members of the council.
Which you have, which you've already had.
We've, we've.
I haven't seen that.
Councillor Brooks, I've moved on to councillors' questions. Do we, do we?
Well, that part, I don't get them.
Right, you should, do you wish to? You can either address it now, or you can address it later, it's your choice.
Uh, one question, uh, for councillor Brooks, please can the council explain why full councils never show leases or contracts before they're signed? Also, a lot of policy or procedure documents aren't up to date on the website line.
Do you wish to respond to that?
Okay.
Can I ask, chairman?
I can't hear, I'm working.
No, I can't either, chairman, can I ask a question?
No, I'm, I'm, I'm going to, please, please sit down.
And giving a letter in a week in advance when it says seventy-two hours, and the council is refusing to give a response to quite a series of.
Standing orders do not require the clerk to give a response to, to members' questions during the meeting. That is in the current.
Well, then there's no point having it.
The question, I'll read it out in case someone didn't hear it. Not sort of called like me, councillor's question is, please can the council explain why the full council is never shown leases or contracts before they are signed? And then there's a statement, also a lot of policy and procedure documents are not up to date on the website, or then it's a question, sorry, why? The clerk will respond to that, but she does not have to respond to it during the meeting, that is what the standing orders of this council agree to state.
Can I make a question?
Right, agenda item six, this is the clerk's report.
Already been sent out. Um, I've also, um, which has gone around, um, which you've already had the information just regarding, um, for the R I R C, regarding mentoring, which you all have a copy, but I've just done even that copy, just in case the members would be interested.
Okay. Agenda item seven, deputations by the public. Have any deputations?
Do you want to make any comments?
Oh, God, no.
Take that as when the member of the public does not wish to make a.
Thank you, good night.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, agenda item eight, the working group steering group strategy. First one is the neighbourhood plan steering group. Are there any that's been updated, are there any questions or comments on, on that?
Who's our representative?
Since the last one.
Pardon? Who's our representative on that? No, no. All right, that's not the one that you were taking on to, to dash into this.
Sorry?
I'm now, I'm very confused.
What, what about the neighbourhood plan steering group?
That's not the one that we haven't actually got a representative on.
We haven't, we haven't.
No, we haven't got one on.
They have, the neighbourhood, the neighbourhood plan steering group. I'm the representative, since the formation.
Am I right, so which is the one we haven't got a representative on?
Town park, sure.
Town park, I like that, don't forget the word of the, thank you, sorry.
But we are, we are agenda item eight, which is the working group steering group strategy.
Yes, I've got that, town park.
Can I just ask a question?
Yes, you may.
Why is the neighbourhood plan steering group report, um, not in the required format that the council agreed?
Because the for- the format it is in is the agreed format until May two thousand and eighteen.
I knew you were going to say that because of all the promotion that you called in the meeting, that our, our thing was that the changes to the structure should have only been from May.
Number eight.
Everybody else has changed to the new reports that make sense and actually tell us what's going on, so I don't understand, chairman, why you did that.
That's why I brought, yeah, I thought we said, councillor.
Thank you for listening.
So what, what, I'm lost now, I'm sorry.
We are agenda.
Yeah, I need notes, which are we on?
We. Neighborhood plan.
Oh, that one, that, that's great. Yeah, thank you, got it now.
Okay. Any other comments on the neighbourhood plans or questions on the neighbourhood plan steering group? Okay, move on to the promotions and publicity working group.
I can, I can, I'm sorry.
So, so, I can study them.
I'm not, I'm not quite ready to.
I just want to change, on the nineteenth of August, on our list of band concerts, we're going not performing that day, it's, I've been down here saucy jazz, I don't know about, what are they called?
Ooh, sounds good.
But it's a jazz group anyway now.
Um, I have a question then, um, have the, I've got the clerk, have, please, the councillor.
No, what they?
Resolve this.
No, maybe we could just do in a, in a whole, as a whole, Sally Anne.
Yeah.
Yeah, not go through every individual band, that's fine, you're happy with that? And also some of the other recommendations on here as well, are you happy with that?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, just makes it all.
Right, do you want to take us through these then, clerk?
Well, that's all, so.
Go on, Anna.
What, what was chair meeting?
Sally Anne, did you want to go through the ones then, what?
Well, if you.
Just because you want to see it, so, how, how do you want to?
Okay, the whole of the band concerts.
Okay, you want to do that?
We could do that as a whole, if that's okay.
Okay, let's just then ask and, and you want to do that something?
I don't like it when you put letters in and I don't know what they mean, so I'm looking at the last thing on the thing that you've written on this grid, interview arranged for prospective S G member, S G?
Steering group.
What is that, this, this is the, the planning steering group, but you haven't put the whole thing in, you just put steering group.
Well, it's.
And who's applied to do that?
Well, because it's a neigh- because it's a neighbourhood plan steering group document.
Right, okay, well, that's why I don't like the display, and who's applied for that, and are we allowed to know or not?
No, not at this stage, no, no, it's a member of the public.
One member, as a.
It's a member of the public.
And whereabouts, is it being advertised?
I mean, it advertised, placement for the Stagana steering group, you need to talk to the chairman of the steering group about.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't, because I know quite well, so I'm both asking, because where is it advertised, it's just in the paper? No, it wasn't, no, it wasn't in the paper.
But it was advertised, but I can't see, I can't tell you where.
And I'm doing the deck, probably.
But sorry, I need to catch that.
No, it's, it's a seashore remark, and I'm sorry, but there's so many people that get.
There you go, do you want to say something?
Yes, yes, thank you, um, firstly, my, I congratulate Sally Anne on producing the fabulous report, very. Look, just, just in effort, just, yeah, because this is, this is what we, we were talking about at the last meeting, having clear and precise reports, and I think my hat's off to you, to the, to the group, once again, fabulous, fabulous, uh, series of events coming up for the, uh, summer season, and you will get my full support.
Absolutely.
Good, yeah.
I, I'd like, yes, I'd like to echo those things because these reports are so much clearer.
Yes.
But I'm not being critical, but I think it's important when we're asking to spend money if we could, because to me, this is not actually really the point to be asking to spend money, these are reports.
Yes.
Now, if they are going to be included to authorise expenditure, um, I was wondering if the group could actually clearly define at the end of their next report what the expenditure is, so we know what we're authorising, and then the clerk doesn't have to sit here in the meeting and try and work it out either, so it's, it's a constructive criticism rather than a, an attack, because it's, this is a great improvement, um, we know exactly what's happening, but we're not really clear from all this tiny print what you're asking for tonight.
Okay, councillor, the, the, um, as, as you look through the, the agenda, as opposed to the government report, there is an agenda item for the East direction.
Yeah, I've seen that.
There's one, which is where we discussed goalposts, which is on here, and I think where probably the request to use cuts post, we have teased it out in the agenda items, I think the only thing we need to identify on this particular report is that everybody's happy with the, uh, the band concerts.
But there's also.
So, but I take on board your comments.
Bunting, Adam.
Thank you. Bunting.
Yeah, you're on to a referable.
All right.
So, I just think it's each one, something I've been through there so far.
When was the judge group on? How did it go?
Who's the band called?
Let's, let's do the, do the band concerts first, we have, so do I have a proposer to approve the band concerts? I think that was David first of all, and a seconder, and that was Ann, all those in favour?
F nine.
No, she knows, okay, so you've got that one, not other ones, they don't not on the, they're not on the agenda.
Big Bunting, twenty-fourth of March.
I was thinking you might continue, continue with that.
Um, I'll need to get a quote for that.
Twenty-fourth of March?
For the, pardon, March?
I'll need to get, I'll need to get a quote for that.
It's not, it's not the case that we can.
March, yes. Right, send you to Father's Day, Sally Anne, did you want to go through this with me?
Okay, yeah.
So, so Sally, so Father's Day is still, not going to be coming, because you're still waiting on something for that.
Right, I just wanted to confirm that everybody was happy with me going forward to schools and asking them to, um, if they want to put forward their bands or their choir or anything that they perform, we want to do. So it's not going to cost us any money, it's just, uh.
No, but have we agreed to the events? On the seventeenth of August, is there an event on the seventeenth of August?
Yes. Father's Day, Father's Day. Is that the one?
Have we, have we, has that gone through, council?
Yeah, that's where doing the, so this is authorisation for Sally Anne to go to the schools, yeah.
I propose that Sally Anne approaches the schools.
Well, so tell you that you've got the.
Is that the main production?
No, no.
Later on.
Right, let's, um.
Okay, we've got.
The next one's, twenty-fourth of June, is it?
That's just bands.
Sally, what's the, the Lions?
That's just what they're going to do on the day.
Right.
And that's, you know, again, it's not, they're not charging us or anything, we're not charging them or anything, so it's not going anywhere.
Twenty-fourth of June, is that?
That's just a concert. And then twenty-sixth of June to the first of July is the festival, we've just put it in the report, but we're not actually.
All right, that's all, okay.
Um, the thirty of June regarding the Tories, that's a paper anyway.
Yeah.
Um, the Armed Forces Day.
Yep.
Chairman, can I just quickly jump back to the Lions thing?
Just, just, just a moment.
I think we need to confirm that they can actually book it.
Councillor Brooks, please, just hang on.
Yes, now, hang on.
At Tesco's, we need to have confirmation against that. Yeah, that last kind of, like, they did watch it, that I can, councillor.
What's that?
The Tesco's event.
Right, okay.
Is that what you want to refer to?
No, I'm, I'm going back to booking the, the Lions, and it comes back to the fact that a working group don't have the delegated powers, we got to just, I think, agree that the Lions can be booked, because there was a problem with the bonfire of an event not coming through council last year.
So, uh. Yeah, that's, that's a comment, councillor.
So I propose that we accept.
He's just done it.
Oh, I'll second it.
I seconded it.
Just please, it's not on.
So the Lions are officially booked.
So we, we have a proposer, that was David. I think, who wants to second it? Martin, I think you've seconded it.
Yeah.
So all those in favour? Abstentions.
I have lots of it.
Or abstentions.
Yeah.
Okay, just abstentions. So, thank you for bringing us that, back to us, Martin?
No problem.
So we're now on to the Lions at Tesco's.
Lions, Tesco's, again, I've been invited to provide food on the thirtieth of, no, first of July, which is the Armed Forces Day.
All right, yeah.
So again, if you want to vote on that.
Well, we need to, we need to, we can't get, we can't vote on this until we've had the, the.
But it's not, it's not Tesco's running the Armed Forces Day, it's, having Town Council.
Right, okay.
The, the scouts had permission, because that's why we bought the tea van and had the electricity, so that the scouts could come, and that was approved by council, that they could come to any event and sell tea and coffee and refreshments.
Yes.
Well, that's, that's, unless that's minuted somewhere, that.
It is minuted.
That's Howard.
Yes.
I don't, I don't, this, this is, this is just information at the moment, isn't it, Sally Anne?
Yeah.
Just information at this point, am I right?
Well, in the process of booking, I'm duty fully, that's what we mean.
So can I propose that, that Sally Anne has permission to carry on and book this?
What, which?
The, the Lions, Tesco, Holly and Scouts event.
Holly, Holly has actually stepped back from it this year.
Right, okay.
That, that's what I'm trying to get across, that Tesco's aren't going to be as involved as they were last year.
Right, okay, so this is.
So it is the Open Town Council.
So this is for the Armed Forces Day.
Yeah.
On.
The first of July.
First of July, so, so, okay, fine, so we need to then, so Martin's proposed it.
Well, so what's, let's just be quite clear, so this is something with the Lions and Tesco's, what they'll be doing in Tesco's, is that right?
No, this is part of the band concerts for the year, but we're having an extra long day, we're having the Armed Forces Day included in with the band concerts, which we did last year.
Right.
The Lions are going to provide food, if it's agreed with everybody, the scouts are going to come along and do some teas and copies.
Right.
So that's what we're proposing is to.
As part of that.
A repeat of last year's event.
Right, I understand, I understand.
As we've got the army coming.
Do you understand that?
Yeah, I do.
I'm in the process.
Yeah, so, a repeat of last year's event.
So, so I need a seconder.
I'll second it. David's seconded, all those in favour? Which one is it?
Yeah. Um.
Now we're doing the.
It's just say on the charity football match, which is on hold at the moment, that was just something that we discussed at the meeting, so that's just every information. Then we've done the band concerts. Face painting, bouncy castles, none, none of this has actually been, it was just mentioned in the meeting, so it's only there for reference. Um, the bunting needs to be cut up by the twenty-fourth.
I need to get a quote first.
Yeah, no, that's fine, but that's what that is, obviously.
Did you get the march meeting?
Yeah, it's just making.
I'm, I'm just, just not getting quite clear, we, we, face painting, but is this for all the, all the, all the events?
No, it isn't, because it's just, it's just there for reference, it's something we discussed at the meeting, we haven't decided when we're having a face paint or a bouncy castle, it was just mentioned at the meeting to, when I need it, I'll put paper through.
So the face painting and bunting. We're leaving. So the face painting and bunting, we're leaving, so, so we're now looking at, we need.
The bunting, we're going to get a quote for it.
Yeah. Um, so there's the nineteenth of May, nineteenth of May, is the wedding of Big Harry and his nieces.
Can I ask a question?
Megan, Megan, that's it.
Can I ask a question about that? I don't know if it's possible that we could have, um, a very large, I don't know, do do for football matches, we made a large television screen, so that we could actually be showing it.
That's why we had.
We're looking to it.
Oh, good.
That's why we had the electric pot in the shop.
All right, okay, so your, so your question, the clerk's not making noticeable, you see, so you're, you're.
Wondering if we could have the large screen being right now for football matches, so that they could be watching the thing, which is twelve o'clock, and afterwards they're going to have a horse and car, not a horse and car, a carriage, round the, and I think if they want to celebrate, we'll probably want to watch it as well.
Yes, it has been sort of like, very bad, that one.
Is that something, Sally Anne?
When it, when it got something more signed, then we will come to the paper.
You're off dealing that.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so.
So we're now still on the nineteenth of May.
Nineteenth of May, we want to hold, um, an extra day, this is a part of the band concerts that we've already had authorisation for, this is an extra day, nineteenth of May, to celebrate the royal wedding, because obviously we didn't know about that when we was doing the other bits. Um, what we're thinking of is having a picnic in the park, i.e. afternoon tea, like the Queen of Wales. Um, we've also spoken to Cat's Primary about the possibility of them doing some May dancing band pol, but again, there's nothing in.
It's still in politics, aren't we?
Yeah.
Did you want, I think Martin's, you, you, sorry, has you finished, Sally Anne?
With that one, yeah.
Okay, Martin, you want to.
I, I think, happy to propose that, but I'm, I'm a bit concerned that obviously it's work in progress, and I think we would probably need to authorise something like the council that gives permission for licence refreshments, because it's possible we have a bar with a television or whatever, so that that doesn't become a problem later down, you know, it's not that far away, May, so if we could propose it, but also that the council gives permission for a licensed person to sell alcohol at the event, because that can be anyone, that could be someone selling things, or it could be the grain store, of which we had before.
Okay, thank you, I think I'd like to come in.
As we said, nineteenth of May, because it's so much in, it's open at the moment.
As we said, 19th of May, because it's so much in, it's open at May 19, we just defer that and the P D W G will be looking at it.
I'll take my proposal.
Yeah.
So what you're suggesting is, so the 19th of May event.
Okay, don't worry about anything on that. But we've noted all the comments.
And it's up to individual people to get their own licenses.
Okay, well, thank you, so we're parking that one for now.
The next one is the 22nd of April, which we've already got paper for.
That's the person, a separate gender item, yeah.
Um, the Ekun we've got a paper for, the 7th of April, oh yeah, no, that was it, that was it, Ekun on 7th. Um, the Heritage League, look, we were questioned about that, um, we had some quotes through.
Yeah, today.
Today, was it?
Yeah.
Um, so we will put a paper together and we'll bring that forward at the next meeting.
I think authorization spend, that was done last year.
What?
So that is, that's what we're making the price.
And the other bits are just for general, really, the information. Okay, so the next page. It's the Christmas working.
There's someone, so we, we, hang on a moment.
Oh, sorry.
Anything else on promotions, obviously we're going to.
No.
Okay, then we'll move on to the.
Oh.
Sorry, you want to add something?
Accept that we're going to, when we've got the new incumbent at the church, the blessed. Roger, see to him or her, I'll work with her.
Right, Christmas working curriculum.
Yeah.
Salyan, do you want to read on that?
I can do that, um, we've got paper for the first bit of that, which is the Tesco's, we'll come to that later. Um, Adam spoke to us about all the information that he's gained over the years on Christmas lights. Which has been passed on to Nick and Paul, when we've got dead. Um, so now we've left it with those and the Wednesday's got some quotes and stuff, then we will come back. With the paper. But that's not much else, we can perhaps just work your process at the moment, that's just information.
I will think you want, you want Nick and I have been drawing through websites and this, I think we found a quote about £420 for a tree, didn't we? Which we'd have to decorate and remove ourselves, but I got another quote to remove and deliver 800 quid, so I think you're looking at around about £420.
Yeah.
Um, for the tree.
Well, we'll get a meeting together and then.
You, you, you. Yeah, I think what we've got to do is just knock up a laptop or something, you can maybe add some stuff, put out a few tenders, I found 15 valuable farms in the, in the, that's a sheer area to supply Christmas. Um, if we can meet soon. As for the lights, I don't know if you found, Adam gave us three very useful contacts, but I haven't found that. You know, I think we can number that, that works here, are we probably something you thought you were for? We're on it, so, as we promised.
Okay, thank you for that. Gender rights of nine, statements of the camps, signed by the, once the side were approved, the statement of the camps for 31st of January 2018. So we'll take this one at a time, don't have any complaints, just to approve this thing of the camps. Martin?
Yes, I've only got a couple of, um, questions, um, this payment on the 16th of January to the plumber in relationship to, um, the Princess Avenue building. According to the lease, I believe, the tenant is responsible for repairs, it, it did that call before the lease was signed or after?
It was a pretty big.
That, that's not a problem, um, the, the, the other thing is, there's a lot of millennium things, I'm a bit concerned because a lot of them don't make sense to me, licenses, telephone support, and it's not, it's not small money. Um, and then the, the, the other one, which is a huge concern to me, because we moved away and it really, and it's the 26th of January and it's our website hosting, it's 456 pounds. That's what our website or two costs to build these days, we moved away from a hosting company because they hook up the price, we, we should not be paying more than somewhere around a hundred pounds a year to host. Um, we won't even pay a millennium, a hundred, I think it was a hundred and twenty pounds a year when they used to host the website before we moved to this ridiculous one that we just gave up before. Um, but also what concerns me, and forgive me if I've missed it, but where was the authority to pay that, please, that it is quite a lot of sum of money? From this council, because I don't remember it coming to council, are we stuck in a contract with this?
Thank you, Council, Brooks, the clerk will respond to that.
I checked the contract and it is, as stated per the contract, that members resolved, so yes, we can, we have to pay it.
Sorry, Chairman, that's a point of it, and that's why I asked the question, why we don't see contracts, because.
We did have copies of that, of the.
But I never saw that we were going to have to go to the chair in charge of £450 a year for nothing.
The point the clerk has made, Martin, is that council resolved.
It was in the, it was in the contention.
That the council resolved to enter into that contract. Simple, simple, she's, she's answered your question by telling you the amount of money.
That, I appreciate her answer, I missed it.
The amount of money is in accordance with contract.
Oh, it's not there from nothing.
Anything else on, any different ones on this? So we're looking at, so do I have a proposer for approval, you can't, Nick's approved it, seconded? All right, okay, all those in favour? I think that is, against abstentions. Right, next one then, members to consider potential budget for 31st of January 18, any questions or comments?
Oh, I, I don't.
What?
Yeah, was it France?
No, no, there was a proposer, a proposer's seconded. Seconded, those in favour? Those against abstentions, thank you. Our next one then is to approve the clerk's standing shot, and I'll ask the clerk to take us through that, where's, again, change of, I'm not sure we're going to, because the clerk doesn't have it, it's just don't make. So we need to go through it.
Um, I don't, we don't actually need the paper cartridges as we speak, however, I'll put it on there in case we do run out between next meeting, so it might not necessarily be spent.
Okay, so for the paper and cartridges, any questions?
Chairman, I can't hear the conversations between the two of you, what has been said?
I said, I can't shout, so I'm afraid I'm losing my voice.
I, I shouldn't say something, and I just can't understand this.
Can you repeat what you said, Alison?
Yeah, so I can hardly speak, um, there's all, I've asked for authorization on paper and cartridges, I don't actually need it at this moment, in case we run out between now and the next meeting.
Right, that's all I needed to know.
Martin?
We're doing two items together there, but, um, I have a concern about printed cartridges, um, one member of the council, I think it was three months ago, questioned why we've spent hundreds of pounds on printed cartridges. And we were told they were recovered in case they were needed, since then, we've spent similar money each month. Now, the reason I have a concern is that I personally don't feel that a machine that we bought in the corner of that office is being used. It's a singing and dancing printer copier which should connect, we should not be using desktop printers in here, it's the most expensive way of printing now. Members don't realize how much stuff has been printed and sent to me at the moment, today, I had two full pages.
I'll stick to the genderizing.
And I'm just saying why I'm concerned and how things have been wasted on that, and I understand these are not going to be used now, but I'd rather say look into the problem of why we're suddenly spending so much on printed cartridges when we've got this huge machine that's supposed to.
All singing and dancing.
All singing and dancing and make the clerk's job easier, but it seems to be not being used on the evidence of the quantity of printed cartridges for the desktops, maybe they should be scrapped. If I'm allowed to comment, that's all.
I just wanted to prepare to reprove it.
Sorry?
I just wanted to.
Yeah, but I have, I have to give people alternative to live or survive, take your point, anybody else wish to make any comments?
Are we doing these individually or all together?
Would you?
Well, we've done these together, we need to do that separately, yeah. Do you wish to make any comments?
Not the first to know.
Anyone else? Nick then, so your proposer?
Absolutely.
So we've, we've, I said one and two, paper and printed cartridges, do I have a second then? And Salyan was, I guess, all those in favour?
I admire.
I don't, I don't, I'm biased.
I'm abstaining, you're principal.
Against abstention, 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 so I have to, yeah, has he got my number now?
No, you put the tail, yeah.
The next one, prize money for the Oakhamtown Partnership Photographic Petition. Council, Brooks?
Um, yes, I'm, I'm a bit concerned that this is listed as a clerk's expense and why it hasn't come as an agenda item with a supporting request, the letter that's enclosed doesn't actually request the money, the letter's addressed to Mr Haley. Um, thanking us, we were misled because I made a fuss when this was brought to council saying we can't reward an individual and I was told that the money was going to go to sponsoring the event, so I was happy. But it's very clear here, the prize money has been given to an individual, I'm also concerned if somebody has asked for it to be done again, the fact is from research I've done on the person who won the first and third prize, that they could be classed as a professional photographer. And there is also a connection between them and the neighborhood plan of Edith Weston, I was under the impression that, yes, it was very clearly stated for obvious reasons in their rules and conditions, that no town councillor could join in. But I can't remember if it said the professional, this man has photographs published on the front, the front page of magazines.
I'm going to stop you there, Council, Brooks, because you're now delving into.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I've gone off, but what I'm saying is, where is, where is the request for Oakhamtown Partnership?
Yes.
No, I, I, no, I'll now, if you'll sit down, please, I'll now ask the clerk to respond to this.
Can I just finish, and I, I, I appreciate you interjecting because I was going on, but also, the Oakhamtown Partnership is, is not a charity and that's important for later, it's a business and I've looked today and it's under category two, sorry, eight, two, three, oh, one, activities and fair organizer, which is not what a partnership should be, so.
Council, Council, Brooks, that has got nothing to do with this genderizing.
It is when we're considering giving them money, we're being asked to give them money.
No, I'm not, you please.
At the form, on the third column, it says minute reference, it has already been resolved and I have the minute reference on there, it just needs to be voted for me to be able to pay it.
Thank you.
Carrie?
The, the, so next.
Why are we paying Oakhamtown Partnership, why aren't they?
Because, Joyce, with, as, as the clerk has just tried to tell us.
Yes, I can apologize to the clerk, I can see.
Can you please, can you please stop it?
I'm apologizing, Chairman, for making a mistake, I, I'm not used to this form at the moment and I miss that that is.
Your apology is accepted, please, Joyce.
And it was obviously a minute from 2006.
I will try and answer the question if I can. Council's paying it because council resolved, has already resolved to pay it, what the clerk now, is now asking is for authority to make the payment.
I can't, I propose she pays it if.
No, just a moment.
I think, I think, on, on that issue then, if we've already resolved that we're going to give them a meeting, two, two, nine, 16, why is it here? We've already authorized the payment, surely, and, and this is why I'm abstaining on, on these payments, because this is, this is ridiculous. And I said it last meeting and I will keep on saying it until the regulation is changed.
Well, until, until the regulations change, as Chairman, it is my job to ensure that we do comply with standing orders, financial regulations and any others that council, council, that's all of us, has resolved. And council resolved to change the financial regulation, okay, does that answer your question?
Yeah, I, I appreciate.
Yeah, I, I, but this, but this is what council has resolved to do, so do I have a proposal?
I'm, I'm retracting my proposal because I, I obviously made a mistake, there is already a priority to pay this because I can.
Do I have a proposal for the clerk to make this payment?
Yeah.
Thank you, a second then, thank you, please a second then, all those in favour?
Well, they already voted in 2016.
And all those in favour, those against abstentions? That's. Well, next one then is the P L, P L one, is that, this is the portable loop system for hearing.
Um, can you talk about that? How do you, you've requested a hearing aid for the chamber?
Two years ago, thank you.
But you only brought it back.
I.
All right, let's, let's not have an argument.
Two years ago, I think I'm.
Let, let's please not have an argument, we, we are.
Do we have it installed?
Do we approve the, the clerk?
I'd like to.
Why? Because I was not involved, I can't hear what you're saying, no, I was not involved in that meeting and, oh, by the way, the chairman just happened to be in the building, so did I, and I was not even invited to the, the meeting of the rep. I'm sorry, there's too much secrecy going on here.
Do you mind just coming, I'm not quite sure what is going on.
You know very well what I'm talking about.
Please don't swear at me.
She didn't swear.
She didn't swear.
I thought you swore.
I don't think Joyce would ever swear.
You want to apologize to me for that?
Well, in that case, I thought you swore with an apology.
No.
No, I'm not, I'm not sure what you're talking about, but we're talking.
I am talking about the loop system, there was a meeting with the rep. Yes.
The, what, do you remember, um, the, the rep, the rep turned up to see, to meet Sarah and.
Oh, when we were having a meeting.
Well, we were having a meeting and it was. No, that wasn't by chance at all, and, um, the, the meeting room was being, um, was being used, um, so we had to provide them all the details, you just happened to be in the meeting room.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I wasn't at the meeting.
No.
Right, okay, thank you.
So how can we vote on it, if we don't know what it is?
And we've got papers, but I, can I make?
The paper went out with the agenda.
I know, I've got a stat list for two years of this loop system.
We've, what we're looking at, Joyce, is whether to authorize the clerk to buy this.
Yes.
Hearing aid loop system for the chamber, and the papers went out with the agenda.
Yes.
I, Chairman.
Yes, you are.
Um, I don't want to add to Mrs Lucas's upset, but I have asked over the last two or three years for a hearing loop to be installed in here, not just for Council of Lucas, but part of the council's diversity and inclusion policy, we should have one. I produced a paper for this council, which actually had something which was quite adequate, a fixed unit. Unfortunately, when I tried to bring it to council, I was told, it's my project, so it never came to council. Unfortunately, as well, when I suggested originally to council that we just repeated the tabletop model, which was, I've seen at RCC, we were told, it's not good enough, so I can't support this because, um, another colleague has given me some advice and I've looked into it, this won't work. You can see by the picture that you practically got to sit face to face for it to work or you've got to buy additional microphones. This won't work, you can see by the picture that you practically got to sit face to face for it to work, or you've got to buy additional microphones now. What I'm going to suggest this evening, I don't want to do it, but I suggest that a working group of two people, which maybe includes councillor Lucas, if she wants, is set up so that this can be looked at properly and brought to council at the next meeting with a couple of options, which will include the installation. It doesn't cost much, I got a quote for about two hundred quid for a amplifier and a wall.
Let's, let's get, let's get that...
Can I finish, sorry?
Because we're going, we, we, we're going off the gender item.
Yes, but my proposal is that this is deferred...